So if the Eagle Scout and the rest of you could come up for the check presentation, we would sincerely appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much. We certainly appreciate the grant that was provided to the city and was a great project for our community. We also would like to specifically acknowledge Daniel Howe for his work as Eagle Scout that led to the Community Garden Project. Could Daniel come up? Thank you for your work, Daniel. We greatly appreciate it. Just because we had a technical difficulty with the streaming of the meeting, I do want to just reiterate the fact that the Truth in Taxation Loon Tax Levy Hearing will be has been postponed until next November 26th, the next City Council Meeting. For our listeners, at that time, we will have a full-blown hearing, and so if you care to address City Council at that time, please make arrangements to attend that meeting. All right, thank you. Item number six, we move on, is a recognition of the Harvard FC, the Espanol Soccer Team, and we're going to recognize a bunch of players. So I'm going to, if all the players, you want to do this one at a time? Okay, so as I call your name, if you'll come up, Administrator Leone will be awarding you a certificate in recognition of your play on the Harvard Football Soccer Team. Okay, Giovanni Bernal. If you could, if you could remain up here, then we'll take a group picture thereafter. Okay, Luis Bernal. All right, Miles Brennica. Okay, Brandon Estrada. Anthony Gorstejata. Eddie Hernandez. Alexander Herrera. Giancarlos Juarez. Giovanni Juarez. Diego Lopez. Oscar Mercado. Giovanni Morales. Leandro Roldan. Francisco Sanchez. And Adrian Tenorio. And then we're going to also recognize the two coaches. Assistant coaches Freddie Juarez and head coach Hugo Roldan. So now, if you guys could group together so they could take a group picture of you.
You ever go catch the bars game? We don't want, not that we don't want to stay.
No, no, no.
We're trying to catch them.
You catch the end of it, you're right.
Yeah, please excuse us. Thank you.
We'll wait till most of them clear out so we can hear. Okay, we'll move on to item number seven on the council's agenda, and that's a recognition of the Harvard Tree Board and their October, I should say Oaktober event. We just want to recognize the sponsors that helped us plant 16 trees in Mary's Park. The trees were planted and chosen to be planted throughout the park to demonstrate the type of trees that the Tree Board has basically determined are trees where we can plant in various settings, whether it's in the right-of-way, under wires, in a park setting, and some of them are flowering trees, and some of them are, there's just lots of different varieties, which has been a big change for the city since the city really had a very small group of trees that were permitted to be planted. So we want to recognize those sponsors. They were the Harvard State Bank, the Harvard Garden Club, Edwards Jones, Harvard Ford, IMI Can Learning Center, and then the Polis Palace Family, Falcon Green Refuge, Davy Tree Company, and Gertie's Nursery, Wholesale Nursery Incorporated. So thank you very much to those sponsors for sponsoring that event. All right, we'll move on to item number eight is the staff monthly reports. At this time, the City Council has an opportunity to ask staff questions regarding their monthly staff reports. Council, any comments or questions? Here none. We'll move on to item number nine, nine A through nine K, which is the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that council wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Which one?
Letter J has the wrong time. It should read three to eight instead of 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Ah, the, that's right. Okay, so for the, the request to close Air Street from Brainerd to Sumner Street, the cross streets would remain open during the Day of the Dead Celebration on Saturday, November 2nd. The change is from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Have a motion by Schultz, second by. Oh, make that correction. Okay, 1:00 p.m. Alderman, care to?
Yeah, motion approved with the change of the time for J to 1:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I am in my second.
All right, we have a motion by Schultz, second by Carn Cross, to approve items nine A through nine K with the change to nine J being 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Any other comments or questions here? Here none. Clerk call a roll.
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavalee?
Yes.
Carn Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 10 is deleted since there were no items removed from the consent agenda. Item number 11 is a payment of the bills. Motion sought to approve payment of the bills in amount of $350,449.88.
Make a motion to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $350,000.750.749.88.
Second.
A motion by Hatterline, second by Carn Cross. Any comments are here? Here none. Clerk call a roll.
Lavalee?
Yes.
Carn Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
All eyes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item number 12 is an open of bids for surplus property. We received several sealed bids to be, and they'll be open in conserv for surplus property located at 307 Grant Street. I think there were something like 16 bids.
16, 18 bids.
18 bids.
First bid is from Martin Rojas, R-O-J-A-S. Bid amount is $38,000.38,007. Second bid is from Esther Telas. Offer, the bid is $50,100. Maria Hernandez. Bid amount is $70,000.
How'd you get those in order?
They're not in order.
Maria Dominguez. Bid amount is $50,015.
Way to go, Charlie.
Yeah, I screwed it up.
Feels like the price is right.
Jigs.
Yeah, yeah.
Maria Dominguez. Bid amount is $50,000.
This one.
Maria J.
The last one was Maria T. This one's.
$50,000 even. State Line Investments, Mark Hathaway. Bid amount is $51,530. Luis Castaneda. Bid amount is $40,444. $40,444. Jeremy Mortimer. Bid amount is $38,600. Felipe Ortiz. Bid amount is $72,501. Arenta Esquivel. Bid amount is $50,000. Tim Perkins. Bid amount is $40,100. Jesus Sanchez. Bid amount is $71,556. Tracy Zank. Bid amount is $48,500. Baroque Properties. Bid amount is $35,589. $35,589. Renard Stat. Bid amount is $46,600. Costino Mondragon Esquivel. $38,000. Vicente Cruz. Bid amount is $60,000. Gustino Esquivel and Roberto Esquivel. Bid amount is $60,000 even.
All right, the highest bid was Felipe Ortiz at $72,501.
I make a motion that we award the property to the highest bid, Felipe Ortiz, $72,501.
Second.
Have a motion by Schultz, second by Carn Cross, to accept the bid of $72,501 from Felipe Ortiz. Any comments or questions? Well, the rules are all in place, right, about how quickly you have to come up with the, you know, post the money and all that sort of thing.
And for the record, they have to have the home habitable within six months.
Any other comments or questions?
And so I would assume then if, for whatever reasons falls through, we move to the next highest bidder? Will we have to approve that?
It's up to council's discretion.
Okay. Should we approve that in this meeting then? I mean, should we update the? No? Okay.
I think if, if the sale actually falls through, then we would bring it back to you to work to the next highest bidder.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions?
Anne, can you come up real quick? I have a question for you. Yeah. So, so when everyone was, attended the open house, were they told, or they were given the rules, or they told the rules? I just want to make sure that the individual understands they have six months to occupy, and they've got X amount of time to come up with the money, et cetera.
I believe the rules were listed on our page, right?
And in the posting itself.
Okay.
Six months is pretty fast to remodel an entire house, so, and I think they might have to come in for an extension at some point if it isn't getting done.
Okay.
We just don't want it to be stagnant the way it is right now for another couple years.
No, I agree. Yeah, I agree. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
You have something to say there, Donovan?
Yeah, I just want to give kudos to Anne for going through that process to acquire this property. It's a lot of work in code enforcement, going through that process to get it to where it is, and working with TJ and ZRFM to acquire it, and now it's $72,501 coming to the city. So good job, Anne.
Thank you very much. All right, any other comments or questions? Here none. Clerk call a roll.
Alderman Carn Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Foreman?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavalee?
Yeah.
All eyes, motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Item number 13 is a proposed ordinance amending various sections of the unified development ordinance. Note, the public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on 9/3/24 and reviewed by the City Council on 9/24/24. Recommendation here is to, a motion to approve the ordinance as submitted.
Motion to approve.
Um, I'll second, and then I have a question.
Okay, we have a motion by Carn Cross, second by Hatterline, and you have the floor.
So my question was, so the Section 1, Article 5, the lot area per dwelling, wanted to clarify that the 4,356 square foot lot size is only applicable to a multifamily unit, like a duplex. It's not, you wouldn't build a single-family home on a lot that small.
Correct. It's two-family only.
Okay, and where does it say that?
It will be revised in the table.
Okay.
On the bulk use table.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure, since it doesn't say it in the ordinance. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Wasn't, wasn't there an open issue in that, the last, the last bit, about the monotony here?
Yeah.
And wasn't that supposed to go back to committee or to the planning commission or something?
Monotony will go, the anti-monotony section will go back to Community Development Committee along with the snout house section, and then to Planning and Zoning. To Community Development Committee, the City Council, to send it back to Planning and Zoning.
So those two issues are not part of what you're approving? Yeah, I know. I'm just surprised that it hasn't already done that. Hasn't gone back to.
Keep in mind that it was supposed to go back to Community Development, but we didn't have a meeting this last month, so.
But you didn't have a meeting because you didn't have anything to talk about.
There were, that would have been the only item that, that we would have talked about. That's why, and, and discussion with the chairman.
I wasn't present, so we wouldn't have had a quorum to vote on it.
That's right. That was the only. That's right, that was the other reason, sorry.
That one's a pretty big one.
Yeah. We'll get it done, it's just, in the moment, I wasn't in the state, so I wasn't able to make that meeting.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, that didn't fall through the cracks and, okay.
All right, any other comments, questions? Here are none, clerk call a rule.
Alderman Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carn Cross?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries. Ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty-eight.
Thank you. I have number fourteen, is the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing staff recommendation, a motion sought to approve the petition to submit UDO text amendments to Planning and Zoning Commission on November fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Carn Cross, second by Schultz. Any other comments or questions here?
Would anyone like to explain the request and why it's being made?
We are in talk with a potential dispensary and craft grow operator. They have targeted an area in the industrial park where they'd like to build, something to complement, if you will, Rush Creek Distilling. And their timeline is condensed, so typically we would put this before committee, then the City Council, then Planning and Zoning Commission. We're hoping to get things kicked off in December with them, if everything gets approved, so that's why we skipped one step unfortunately to get it right to you all and council.
And so what, how is that related to the reception banquet facility?
They would like to have cannabis-related events. Sounds weird to say out loud, but...
Call them conventions.
Conventions, okay.
So whether it's a cannabis-themed wedding or what have you, we thought that was appropriate to be a conditional use to determine parking layouts, things like that, so...
Shouldn't they just be at, like, Taco Bell?
That's what the food trucks are for.
I don't know, I don't understand your joke.
It works.
Thank you, Donovan.
You're welcome. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other comments or questions? Here are none, clerk call a rule.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Definitely, yes.
Carn Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
Yes, with enthusiasm.
All right, thank you. I have number fifteen, we, I am removing I have fifteen from the agenda because the motion that we're seeking for an ordinance, when this was presented to the Parks and Recreation Committee, there was still some outstanding information for them to make a decision. And so we will remove that from tonight's agenda and hopefully put it on next month's agenda, assuming the Parks and Recreation Committee has had an opportunity to review that issue. Okay, I have number sixteen, is the Lions Park path quote from Majestic Asphalt. Recommendation is to approve the Lions Path Park, Park Path quote from Majestic Asphalt in the amount of one hundred ten thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Should state that, so everyone knows, this path is being paid for by grant that I applied for with our state senator nearly two and a half years ago. And the city was finally awarded that grant of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to build a, an extension of the park path that would connect the senior center with the library. So this item is up for you for a motion.
We need to correct the amount.
Yep.
It's eighty thousand something.
Eighty-six thousand five hundred.
Thank you.
Something you want to discuss now, because it's going to affect the outcome of the project?
I think, yes, let's discuss now before we get a motion in a second.
Okay, so I did send you guys an email earlier, if you got it or not. I watched the meeting last night and there was some discussion regarding taking the extra funds and using them for benches, trees, garbage cans, and not doing as much of the path, I believe, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
We are not able to do that under the current terms of the grant without resubmitting it for an amendment, which could take four to six months once we get it back. In the meantime, we can proceed with the grant as is, as long as a hundred percent of the funds are contributed to either engineering or paving. It's my understanding that the paving is in question as far as the base and the top, the black. So at this point, we will need to decide, I believe Majestic is ready to go as of a week from tomorrow. So I don't know if we want to table this until the spring and try to...
We can't amend the grant money.
We will not lose the money, I spoke with her today, and as long as we request an extension, we can get an extension, but it requires a finance amendment and more paperwork, basically. So one of two options, three options actually, we can proceed as is, spend the one hundred and twenty-five thousand on paving with the base that Gary recommended and the top that Gary recommended, and get as far as we can. With that, second option would be to ask for an extension on the hundred percent of the paving to the spring and possibly look into going down to clay, maybe not doing as much path, the things you discussed last night at the committee meeting. The third option would be to request a complete amendment of the entire grant and go with the eighty-some thousand in paving and then the additional would be for fixtures, trees, and other amenities to that path.
Could we lose the grant though, if we wait?
Yes, if we don't ask for an extension and we don't do anything else, we'd have to pay it back. Keep in mind too...
If we ask for an extension, are we going to get it, I guess? Could we lose it by doing that?
I would say probably not, I can't say for sure. I have the money in the bank, so we have the money. So, you know, if we lost the grant, we would have to pay the money back. So I'm pretty certain, since they've already turned the funds over to us, that yes, we could probably get an extension based on weather, timing, the fact that we'd like to do the path, for lack of a better term, correctly. I'm sure I could, with the help of Administrator Leoni, word an amendment or an extension that would allow us to go that route, if that's what this body wants to do. Well, I think one of the issues that we discussed last night was that, for at least part of the path, in particular that south portion, that there was a feeling that having some engineering done to make sure that the path is designed, given the soils and the wetness of that area, was important, rather than just saying, okay, just treat this like every place else and just excavate down a certain amount, put in the rock and then put a cover on it, because the feeling was that it might not, there's a good chance it wouldn't last in that, in that area in particular.
Deb, we couldn't add benches and garbage cans, but could we extend that path west? Scott mentioned that last night, towards the apple orchard, so just go as far as we can with the money we have.
So you're, instead of looping around to the south, you would go to the west instead?
We talked about, we approved last night, or the park board, sorry, approved last night, just doing the top C part, so it makes a loop. But I'm saying, so where the top rolls off, you just go west along to Cornfield as far as you can go until we run out of the money. Is that, are we able to do that, is that big enough change in the plans?
I can find out if changing the actual direction of the path would require an amendment. I can make that call tomorrow and find out. If that's the case, I'm going to say that as long as it's a hundred percent paving, that probably would be a quicker amendment to make than to actually change up the whole scope of the project, because there's different categories and the only category we qualified for for this project was paving and engineering. So those other things you wanted to do would change the whole category, so this might be a quicker turnaround to extend the path in a different direction, but I can't say for sure.
Given this newfound information, I'd recommend City Council that you direct staffing to file for an extension, which gives you time to consider the matter.
I agree with that, and I think also we should talk to our engineer and get his input, more of it anyway.
Do it right, that's the thing.
We're going to do it.
Yeah, right.
It's just, we're not so hemmed in, if you will.
Agreed, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a call tomorrow, make sure that we can do that without losing the funds, and try to extend it out at least into late spring or early summer, which gives us some extra time. We can't do anything after this month anyway, so, until, what, March or April?
Right, or maybe, yeah, April, depends when the asphalt plant's open.
Okay.
We also would be going into budgeting, so we could potentially know a little bit more about what we're doing with this and we can set aside a little bit of money if we need to for benches and trees. Shading, shade and that kind of stuff, so I don't think a long park path in the direct sun in the summer is worth it.
The only point I want to bring up for that is we're probably going to be looking at increased costs as it's after the first of the year. So that would be something we can look at for budgeting as well. I agree, I think we should do it correctly, so, you know, we have a hundred and twenty-five, so we can build it from there. Deb, and we can get more quotes too. Yes, we'd have time to get more quotes, correct.
Yes, because there was, of all the bids, we were only able to use two, because they could do it in the timeframe.
Right.
So you would open it up to additional bids.
Yes, good point.
Can I get a motion to direct staff to file for an extension?
Move to direct staff to file for an extension on the Lions Path Park grant?
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Hatterlines and a second by Luna. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Here are none, clerk call a rule.
Alderman Luna?
Yes.
Hatterline?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lavelle?
Yes.
Carn Cross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. I have number seventeen, is a strategic vision review. I had nothing specific on the review this evening to chat about. Does council have anything they want to discuss? Here are none, we'll move on to department head reports. Now, all of our department heads are here, but let's start with Ann, do you have anything tonight?
Reports submitted there, and I'm happy to meet the open house.
I agree, thank you so much for the hard work that you've done on that. This has been, I don't know how many houses now that the city's been able to acquire that were dilapidated. Fourth one, okay, fourth one under your leadership, yes, thank you so much. We certainly want to try and remove as much blight within our community as possible and, of course, there is a long drawn-out process to do that. So thank you for being diligent in that regard. Jim, your last city council meeting, sir.
Yes, sir, final report submitted.
Well, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Jim.
I know council has been very appreciative in our residents for, and businesses, for the services you've given to the city, so thank you. Rob?
First, who wipes? First, thank you, Jim, it's been a pleasure to work with you the past year and look forward to seeing you truck around and enjoy your retirement. Yeah, wave at me and smile. Report is submitted on my end, we did have some significant stuff that happened this past month, we got the Howard Street water main extension put in, so that is active and that completes a couple dead ends in our system that will help us in events that we have, main breaks or service issues. Recamite application started today, they're going to be finishing up tomorrow, they got a little bit of interruption with the afternoon rain, so sweepers will be out taking care of the rest of that. Crack ceiling and skip patching is still upcoming, I reached out to Chicagoland Paving today to see if they had an updated list or updated time when they can come. We're kind of getting short on time here, but there are various areas in the city that are addressed with that, you know, Railroad Street, Fifth Street, Diggin's, Yellowstone and Galvin Parkway, there's a lot of stuff on there that we're going to be spreading the love this year. Currently, Public Works is preparing about a hundred and sixty-five feet of sidewalk for replacement in-house, so hopefully we'll have that poured by the end of the week, if not, the beginning of next week, and preparing for the impending doom. Four-letter wrote, I'll be here before you know it.
As temperatures fall, that's certainly something that we have to think about. By the way, were you able to find out anything from the state regarding the work on Diggin's and the sidewalks that are not yet completed?
I have not, the one thing that they did also, they're still in the midst of punch list items, so there's a few of the things that they got to take care of. One of them was getting permission from us to modify the steps over by Central School. They didn't put their handicap ADA buttons for the crossings in the right places, so that's why that's torn up and there's still some construction horses laying around as the, they're not exactly done. They will have crews in here in December to install the final mast arm at Five Points, but other than that, it's just punch list stuff. The mast arm and the crews for that, they were so behind that it's going to be a bit, so there will be some traffic interruptions there. The dotted lines, the skip lines at Five Points are suggestion only still, but it seems to have helped quite a bit, so. And the Public Works, the stretch of sidewalk that Public Works is working on is adjacent to one of the new crosswalks that go across Route one seventy-three heading north, so.
All right, thank you, and I just had a question. Go ahead.
Weren't there supposed to be, there's supposed to be school crossings?
Just, just signed crosswalks.
Okay, signed for school, right, I mean...
Pedestrians, not, not specific for school.
Well, I don't think there's any pedestrian signs there either.
The signage will be coming up, because they just did grass restoration, part of the contract shows detail for signs. So once, once everything is done, that might be something that happens in the spring, I can make sure I keep up on them.
I thought we were getting school crossings, I really did.
I think we're, we're too far away from a school in that area.
Yeah, but they volunteered, is what I...
No, we, we, the city, the city made the request to add marked crossings and IDOT accommodated us with the two of them.
Just a quick question concerning the new dump truck that we have.
Yes.
Who gets to plow with it?
The, first, the lucky, the lucky winner of that drawing is Josh. So of the, of the seven routes that we have in the city, there are two trucks that don't have salters. So the trucks that, you know, so when the normal plow routes are done, those individuals, the five that have salters, will have to go and salt the entire route for the other two. So those are two F-550s, so we are taking one of the F-550s and moving it out and we will have, Josh will have a new truck, so routes are being adjusted to accommodate this, but everybody's looking forward to it. We're hoping to get a second, a second truck, something used, unfortunately, the backhoe decided it wanted to depart ways with us. So we're just trying to hold off and hopefully fund that for next year.
All right, thank you, I was just wondering who won the lottery. Okay, Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council, report is submitted. Just a couple other tidbits, we've updated our departmental website page, so people don't have to click around as much to find the application or contractor's license application, it's all on the first page there, took a lot, took out a lot of the verbiage and just have a one paragraph description for our department, so that way when people call, which we get a lot of calls of, they can't find the application, so hopefully clean things up. We also, with the PD's help, created a permits@cityofharvard.org email address where permits can be submitted electronically. Ann and I both have access to that new email account, so rather than people sending things to her or to me and us checking our phones constantly while on vacation, so we can forward it to the person not on vacation, we could just check that folder whoever's in-house. Today I met with Pet Paradise, got to spend some time with Jen and her son and a cat and all the animals that are in there for about an hour and a half, learning about what they do, what the city can do to help them, and talked about the John Schallert event that they weren't able to attend. But we did discover that in Harvard, we have McHenry County's longest-running family-owned and operated full-service pet store. So that's something that she's going to start using in her posts and things like that as a tagline. And it's leading us into the discussion that we had with... And it's leading us into, uh, the discussion that we had with Philip Sisano recently about telling the story of Harvard, um, you know, starting, you know, with one where the most diverse community in McHenry County, we should celebrate that and tell that story, and, and how that came to be, but then also focusing in on our businesses and, and telling their story, uh, who they are, you know, meet your local business owner type of thing, but then working with them to figure out, uh, why they're a destination in McHenry County and the region. Uh, Dunkin' Donuts, um, I feel like I've said this before, but as of 10-15, they were three weeks out from opening. So another three weeks. And if you haven't already, I encourage you to download the Naturally McHenry County app and start the Tacos, Tamale's, and Tortas tour. Seven local restaurants are participating, complete all seven stops, and you get a free bottle of hot sauce. And finally, congratulations to Jim, it's been a privilege to serve alongside you for the last year and a half, so congratulations.
All right, thank you, Donovan.
Donovan, can we get, uh, do we have a date yet for the, um, car wash?
We do not.
Can we get them to expedite? Because I, finding with Starbucks now, I need to wash my car.
My vehicle.
I'm like, what, what is going on? My vehicle is filthy. Oh, look at that, that store.
Do a rain dance, that'll-
I, well, that wasn't long enough.
Alderman, there are other car washes in town. Just stating, you have a choice. Uh, Chief, what do you have for us tonight?
A report is submitted, uh, give you an update. Carmen, obviously, is at the FBI National Academy, he is currently in Week Four, so he has, it's 10 weeks, however, the week of Thanksgiving, they're closed, um, obviously he'll still be there, but they're, they're closed down for classes, so, um, he's got a little more than just four, so. Our Citizens Police Academy is in full, full tilt, and in Week Four, Five on Thursday. Um, attendance is very well, good, um, everybody's made the meetings so far.
Were we at capacity, or just shy of capacity?
Uh, we, we had 10 people submit, and we were, eight showed up. So, that's where we're at with that.
I do have some feedback from you, from one of the residents, um, and actually, or one of the attendees, but really one of the attendees' parents, who is, um, can't, uh, thank the city enough, uh, that, uh, their, um, their son was able to attend this, and it's really, um, he, that's all he talks about. So, um, it, it really does provide residents a real, up, personal view of what our police department does, and what police officers are required to do on the job, so thank you so much for continuing this program.
Thank you. Um, and lastly, Jim, congratulations, I've worked with you over 20 years, uh, together, and the last year as a golf partner, and hope to continue that, uh, next year in our league, so congrats again, Jim. Thank you, that's all.
All right, uh, Treasurers' Report. Oh, did I, skipped right over Committees? My apologies. Committees' Reports, well, would you go down, um, we'll start on this side. Lori, do you have anything tonight for council?
Couple things.
Sure.
Um, I'm really happy that we're able to delay putting in that one path over there by Lyons Park, because I like the idea that we'll be able to make it further over to the garden area, hopefully, and, um, so, thank you for your service.
All right, thank you, Lori. Uh, Charles? November 11th? Lou, is, for the, uh, Infrastructure Committee?
We're on pace.
Okay, well, it's not on the, um, it wasn't on the calendar, so.
Okay, I go on.
So we'll add that, then, to, for, because that's the regular date for the, uh, that we decided for the infrastructure. And, okay, so we'll, I'll work with you to put the agenda together, and we'll have that meeting, all right. Other than that, I don't have anything. Jim, congratulations again. Good luck to you. All right, thank you. Rosa?
Um, all I have to say is, congrats, Jim, happy retirement, hope you start enjoying your life.
All right, thank you. Lisa?
Yeah, so, um, Admin Committee meeting will be November 19th, Wednesday the 19th, at 6:30 PM, and, uh, Tree Board is Wednesday, November 6th, at 6:30 PM. I don't know, is there a dance class either of those nights?
They're on Wednesdays, I believe.
Right, and both of those are Wednesdays. So-
I don't know if they're scheduled or what, is it on the city calendar?
Okay, so, so they'll either be in here, or in the conference room. And, uh, Jim, just want to say thank you for, for all you've done, and for overseeing the new, construction of the new plant, and getting that operating. Thank you, thank you very much.
Uh, the dance classes aren't on the city calendar, so I do not know. And, uh-
Probably on the parks' calendar? Does she have a separate calendar now?
Yes.
We have calendars everywhere.
They're taking a whole month off.
Okay.
Needs to be updated. Okay. Jay, anything tonight?
Uh, thank you, Jim, for everything, you've done wonderful, I appreciate it. Um, I also want to, um, congratulate, uh, Kim Marsden and, uh, the chamber. Uh, I was, I was at the park meeting last night, but I heard the event was a success at Pops last night, and I think it's important that, uh, we have a reinvigorated chamber, I think it's a good step forth for the community, so, uh, wishing Kim the best of luck. No, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. John?
Um, I don't really have anything, um, except thanks a lot, Jim. Well, every time I flush my toilet.
I, I appreciate it, go on down.
Dan, anything tonight?
Uh, Jim, congratulations, and, uh, you know, you, you saw us through one of the largest projects this town has ever done, so-
The, the largest.
The largest project this town has ever done, so I think that that is, in addition to all the work you've done, that was a Herculean effort that you put in right at the end, and I, I really appreciate that. And the second thing I just wanted to say is another congratulations, even though they, they've gone to see the varsity game. The Harvard, uh, Football Club, uh, that, to reiterate what the, the, the coach said, a club that small, from a community this small, to perform as well as they have, is a huge, uh, mark of achievement, um, especially because of such a small community. So, um, I look forward to the city supporting that club even more, and I look forward to seeing them grow and make it into a bigger program. I think it's really, really good for the community.
All right, thank you. Deb?
So, we know by now that nobody around here who's long in the tooth escapes without a gift from staff. Unlike Lori, who, I think I announced at her retirement that it was her last meeting, she's back, um, in a different role, but she's back. Jim's not coming back, I know that for sure. Been working with Jim for a long time, more closely the last three years, and, um, I think it's important for everyone to know how dedicated he has been, you know, um, a, a little bit more dedicated, I think, than the rest of us, only because of what he does out there, and where his job is located every day. I don't, uh, I know we've all been there, but I don't think, um, everybody can appreciate what him and his guys do. I mean, I've said it several times, I don't know how you do it, I'm glad you do, but every day you get up and you go out to probably one of the least pleasant places in town, um, and, and he does it because he's dedicated, and he does it because he cares. I know that he's had many sleepless nights, um, I'm sure his wife can attest to that, um, aging infrastructure, equipment that's not always top-notch, alarms going off, worrying constantly about the quality of our water supply, because he cares. It's his community, it's his town, he raised his family here, so there is, there is some genuine, uh, genuine care there. And I don't know that he will miss us as much as we miss him. Um, I do have a couple of gifts. The first one is a candle, and it's, it's a manly candle, Jim, so don't get on. Um, I, I attempted to find a scent that, when you burned it, you'd feel right at home at work. However, I could not find that, for whatever reason. Um, so you'll have to, uh, settle for, I believe this is Wedgewood Vanilla, or something of, something like that. Um, but it says, smells like it's not your problem anymore. Happy retirement. Because we all know what you're going to be doing, um, most of the time when you're not golfing with the chief. Jim's retirement plan. And that's all, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. TJ, can you follow that up?
Uh, no, I don't have any gifts for you, Jim, but, uh, I thank you for, you know, your time with the city. I am supremely confident that the day after you retire, we will finally hear back from the Attorney General's office, so don't go too far. But congratulations, enjoy retirement, well deserved.
Okay, Administrators' Report.
Just, uh, Jim, um, you know, I was a new guy here, um, two, almost two years ago now, and, um, you made sure I was fully, uh, up to speed on everything, considering I came in at the tail end of the wastewater treatment plant. You've, you've just been there to, you've been a, a great friend, uh, to have, you've been a, a great Herman Head. Um, I'm confident that, uh, the crew you're leaving behind, uh, will follow, um, what you've taught them. Other than that, uh, it's been a pleasure, and it will be weird, uh, not seeing your face here, making faces during the, the council meeting. Yeah, those are different faces. So, but, again, uh, Jim, thanks for, for your dedication to this community.
And then Mayor, report is submitted. All right, thank you. Clerks' Report.
Upcoming meeting dates, Tuesday, November 5th, we have a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at 7:00 PM. On Wednesday the 6th, we have a Tree Board meeting at 6:30 PM. November 11th, Infrastructure at 6:30 PM. November 12th is Community Development at 6:30 PM. Park Board meets Monday, the 18th, at 6:00 PM. And Lisa, on your admin meeting, the sheet I gave you should be the 20th, not the 18th.
Okay.
That's the Wednesday, so the admin committee meeting is Wednesday, November 20th, at 6:30 PM. Our next regular City Council meeting is the 26th at 7:00 PM. And then just a quick reminder, the upcoming April election, the filing period starts November 12th and goes through November 18th, eight to four, uh, the Monday through Friday, and the last day it would be until 5 o'clock. That's just for your information. That's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you for the Mayor's Report. A couple things, one, I wanted to highlight the Day of the Dead celebration that'll be happening, uh, November 2nd, Downtown Air Street, um, and, so the Harvard City Parks and Rec Department is collaborating with the Harvard Parks Foundation, uh, to bring that event to our community, and so we're looking forward to that, and I hope, uh, everyone can participate. Uh, also, I wanted to bring to your attention that we're, we are looking at trying to update our website, and we're looking at possibly putting, uh, staying with the same, um, you know, the same vendor, but, um, looking at a different skin that would make it easier for people to navigate, uh, and so we'll be bringing that information to you soon, but I wanted to make sure that you're aware that we recognize that, uh, the way the website was before I started to serve as Mayor was pretty 1980s, and the current website is much better improved over that, but we've, we think are better skins out there that will make, um, it more navigable for, for residents to find information, like where to get their building permits, how to pay their water bill, um, how to contact City Administrator to file a complaint, you know, those kind of things, so. Um, we, uh, just want to make sure that, you know, we're trying to stay on top of technology and, uh, be open and transparent, so. That, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion by Car Crossing, by Schultz, clerk, call or roll.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you, good night.
Yeah, yeah, those, those-
ASCII graphics.